Summers are super slow, so most of the time it's going.
Okay.
This fall, so mid-September through mid-November, it'll basically be Monday through Thursday every week, almost every week.
Okay.
For those two months in there.
What do you think?
Say that again?
Where do you like this?
Oh, wherever we have stores. So, we have multiple routes and then we visit different stores each day.
Okay.
So, we stay at each place for twenty minutes, go to the next one.
So, do they have a Texas?
Yes, we do. We have one just north of Dallas.
Yeah, what is, um, in Manhattan? My son works.
Oh.
He's in the system.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
So, I think a couple of them, you know, to open them up and bring it out.
Oh, sure, okay, yeah, cool.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the West Fargo City Commission Meeting for July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I'd ask everybody in the crowd to please silence their phones except for our first responders. And with that, please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Commissioners, you have it in your packets and it has been distributed.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of agenda as presented and distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item D is the approval of the minutes of June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. They're in pages three through five. They have been distributed and commissioners, they are in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of June twentieth, twenty twenty-two as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the building permits. They have been distributed, they are on pages six through ten.
I'll recuse myself from the vote. I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote.
Commissioner George is recusing herself from this vote.
I'm on the list.
One of the items is a, uh, a building permit for herself.
And I'm gonna do the same, 'cause I have a building permit on there, too.
Alrighty.
I wish I had one on there, so I'll make the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, been moved and seconded to approve the building permits, uh, pages six through ten, they have been distributed, they are in your packet. Uh, we have our, uh, Commissioner Olson and Commissioner George are, uh, sits, sitting out on this vote. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items A through Q. Uh, we didn't quite make Z, did we, uh, Emily? Uh, A through Z, uh, starts on page eleven, goes through pages, uh, seventy-nine. They have been distributed, they are in your packets.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items A through Q, pages eleven through seventy-nine. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, we are now on the regular agenda. Item number one is the introduction of Comfort K nine Bella with SRO Officer Pearson.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dartis and members of the commission. Uh, kind of a fun night tonight. Uh, we've been trying to get, uh, a time where we could, uh, connect our schedules and, uh, bring, uh, our Comfort K nine, the newest member of our K nine team, uh, to the commission to introduce, uh, introduce Bella and SRO Pearson. And just real briefly, uh, just as a reminder before, I ask Officer Pearson to share a little bit about the journey so far with, uh, Bella. Uh, just a reminder that this program, uh, was really made possible through, uh, several partnerships. We received a very generous donation from Shields, uh, in order to, uh, to purchase Bella along with some state grant funding that we were able to, uh, to secure for, uh, mental health, uh, work. Uh, and part of that is because she's gonna be assigned not only to, uh, primarily, uh, West Fargo Public Schools through a partnership with them as well, uh, but also to our peer support team here, uh, within the police department and also be, uh, responding to different, uh, community events where, um, you know, where, where her, her skills, which you can tell, um, she is a perfectly suited dog for this role. Uh, Assistant Chief Nielsen spent quite a bit of time trying to locate, uh, the perfect dog for this role. Obviously, it takes, uh, a special kind of canine to be able to fulfill this role and, and so we, uh, we use the same vendor, North Iowa Canines, that we, uh, purchase our, uh, dual-purpose dogs, so our, uh, apprehension dogs and, and drug canines. So, we, uh, we work through that same vendor to be able to, uh, to kind of vet a lot of different candidates and I think we got the best one possible. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Officer Pearson and he can tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you, Chief.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Officer Pearson, um, this is K nine Bella. She's a fifteen-month-old canine with us. Um, she has been with us for about a month and a half now. Um, she's getting along perfectly with myself and, and my family at home, it's myself, my wife, and, uh, we have a eight-year-old black lab, so she's got a sis- sis- stepsister at home. Um, we've been working on our, our basic obedience, our basic of K nine, uh, obedience and, uh, those items of, are the key features of, of, of the K nine, uh, family here. And, uh, some of the things she'll bring to the school is, uh, with our reading groups, our, our, we'll also have me, uh, multiple mailboxes at different schools. I have, could cover about eight schools, elementary schools that I go to, so be a variety of buildings that we go to and that she'll get to learn to and, and besides the additional buildings that she'll get to be, uh, also get to know. But, uh, those will be her primary, those will be those north eight buildings that she'll be part of. Um, she's got the right temperament, uh, we're just working on those, uh, basic skills with her. Bella is a fourteen, or fifteen-month-old mixed lab. Um, she's got a little bit of everything in mix with her, uh, starting with the lab and, um, we're great to have her. She's also part of our peer cur- group support, which is a group, uh, of law enforcement officers working for the better engagement of other officers within our department. So, being part of that team and being part of that group has also been a, a big assistance to us.
One of the things I didn't mention is, uh, the idea of bringing on a, a Comfort or Therapy canine came directly from, uh, our SRO Todd Pearson. So, during some one-on-one interviews that I did with our staff when I started and then some other opportunities to sit down with him, this, this was an idea that was brought forward by, uh, Officer Pearson, uh, just one of the, you know, many great ideas that we get from our staff internally. And, uh, we're, we're proud to say that we're the first SRO canine, uh, comfort team in the state of North Dakota. So, there are many other therapy and comfort dogs that are out there, but we're, uh, we're very proud to say that we are kind of leading the pack, uh, as it will, uh, through the state of North Dakota and the SRO team. So, he's done a fantastic job and I know, uh, the school district loves the program. I've talked to, uh, the leadership over at West Fargo Public Schools and, and, uh, she's just, uh, fit right in with our police department family as well. So, very proud of Officer Pearson and, uh, Bella and, and, uh, they're gonna be a great team and they're gonna do a tremendous service to our community.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any questions? I witnessed firsthand Bella at, uh, Service Club, at the West Fargo Exchange Club and when Officer Pearson brought the dog in, she made friends with everybody in the room. She is, uh, she is a, a unique, her, uh, her disposition and demeanor is, uh, so gentle, so. And Officer Pearson shared with us some of the experiences that he's had in the, uh, in the schools, uh, in using Bella as a calming dog for students that were experiencing what they perceived to be a crisis. And, uh, it, there's amazing stories how, uh, the effect that, uh, Bella had on those individuals. So, thank you for your service as an SRO officer to our, our public schools and to our community. Thank you. Have a good evening. Our next order of business is item number two, which is a forensic needs assessment, RLE. The Ingle Bretsons Group is here to represent this evening. It looks like Kim's gonna join us. Welcome, nice to have you with us.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, commissioners, for having us tonight. Uh, over the last few months, we've been working with Chief Otteness and Administrator Fisk, um, conducting a property condition assessment of your facilities here at this location, the police department and the city hall. Throughout those endeavors, we've, we've looked at the condition of, of the building moving forward, um, some deficiencies with it, and we're gonna walk through our presentation with you here tonight. A big overview of this building is, it started in nineteen seventy-four as, uh, your public library and your city hall in seventy-five. There's been several additions in nineteen eighty-four, um, in the nineties and then also in two thousand and five, with the biggest police department going on in two thousand and fifteen. The building's been very efficient, um, but right now with the growth of West Fargo, you guys are exceeding the capacity for square footage and your staff right now.
The process of the, uh, facility assessment is boiled down into the bullet points that you see here. First of all, we observe what we see, uh, we document what is there, um, we give it a rating, basically A, B, C, uh, and then we try to assign some probable costs, cost range for those, uh, to correct those deficiencies. The site, um, is, uh, one of the first things that we take a look at. Uh, this site has, um, some drainage issues, uh, particularly to the southwest, um, and that causes some other problems as well. So, you'll see sidewalks that have, um, uh, dropped down in grade and, uh, you'll see, for example, on the right side where the sidewalk is actually a tripping hazard. So, uh, the drainage, uh, is, is an issue in itself, but it also causes some secondary things. The building envelope is in, um, uh, a B condition, which is okay, serviceable, needs a few things, um, to, to address some leaking and so on. Uh, the windows and the building envelope, the roof, the brick and the, the enclosure is in serviceable condition, um, just like any building, it needs some, some updating and some maintenance. The mechanical system receives a C and that is mainly because of its, um, uh, its, its use of the rooftop units and then in combination with indoor air handling units. So, it is not a, a, a complete thorough system, it is a system that's been added on incrementally over time. And, um, most of the equipment, a lot of the equipment has reached its, uh, life expectancy at this point. It is working, however, again, it's reached its, uh, life expectancy. The electrical system is, uh, in good shape, it's in B, however, we believe it has, um, its at capacity. So, any, any expansion or additional load to that would have to be addressed. Uh, the other would be the lighting, most of the lighting is fluorescent and the, uh, currently best practices would say to replace that with LED lighting.
The next part of our study was space needs. We conducted surveys, um, interviewing over eighty responders, um, with the condition of, of their spaces they occupy. And then we also took fifteen key members between the police department and the city hall to dig deeper into those findings. Um, some of the things we discovered is that you, um, you have some spaces that are underutilized and some spaces that maybe can be consolidated into square footage in the future. So, we'd, we'd suggest repurposing some of those areas moving forward that are underutilized. Some of the, the growth projections for staff over the next ten years is that your city hall's gonna grow with forty percent of staff in the next through, um, nineteen thirty-two, or two thousand and thirty-two, and the police department is gonna grow by twenty percent.
During the discussions, uh, with focus groups and through the surveys, a number of, um, topics, um, uh, we heard a number of times. So, one of the biggest ones was the growth of the, of the facility, or I'm sorry, of the, of the staff and therefore the, uh, impact on the facility. Um, there are a number of, um, what we would refer to as overlapping uses. Uh, the chamber that we're in is the perfect example of that. It is both a chamber and, uh, a courtroom. Uh, while they seem similar, there are definite differences between them. Um, safety for the judge and the clerks is the, is the biggest item there. The, like I said about the, um, life cycle, many of the building systems, the building itself is thirty to fifty years old. Um, while the police department is relatively new, but some and, uh, most of the building on, towards the west is, is at, um, an ex- a life expectancy of thirty to fifty years. The capacity, um, it is, um, overflowing, it is being used, uh, is being adapted, uh, as we speak to meet the needs of, of staff. The police chief is, uh, scrambling for storage space and fitness space and so on. The location of the building is, is an interesting topic, um, and is, uh, discretion in itself. Where, where this, uh, facility, if, if it would be in a different location, where would that be? This is a diagram, uh, that we developed to just help us understand currently how the building is being used in terms of, uh, color coding and, uh, departments and staff and, um, support spaces and so on. It's, uh, just a documentation of, of, well, how it's being used. The commission chamber itself, what we heard was some of the acoustics is not quite what it should be here, um, and, um, some of the, uh, technology that supports the space is a little lacking. Um, I did mention before, the mun- municipal court, um, really should have its own space because of those safety concerns and how, uh, court proceeding is conducted. Conference rooms, much the same, uh, technology is, falls short in terms of audiovisual, um, sizes, locations, types and so on. The, um, what we heard from the city hall, um, staff and what we observed ourselves, of course, is that the workstations are, they're old, they've been around for quite a, quite a while. They no longer meet the, um, standard of care or standard, uh, design standards of, of today in terms of ec- um, ergonomic storage monitors and so on. Uh, the break room is, um, not a tremendously desirable space. Um, it is, um, underutilized and, um, takes up a lot of space and, and should be, um, used more efficiently. Uh, storage, much the same, um, there seems to be adequate, but perhaps it's not the right size or in the right location. The police department, um, surprisingly had some safety concerns, too, uh, and that was primarily in a situation in an interview room where, um, officers may be, uh, interviewing, um, individuals that maybe would cause some concern, uh, being by themselves. Um, workstations and offices somewhat similar to the city hall where they are, um, um, relatively new, but, uh, don't quite meet the needs that they have today in terms of numbers and locations and sizes. Tactical training and fitness, um, is probably where most of the shortcomings are, uh, in terms of its size. Um, they're way, uh, way too small, basically. Uh, they only handle a few people where, where, um, several times, uh, that number would be ideal for, for training purposes. The police academy is a new item and, and has some needs, um, all on its own. And then we heard that there's a need for a, what we refer to as a decompression room where officers that return from a stressful call need a place to process and calm down, talk it through, um, and just kind of decompress that, that whole situation. The armory, again, is, is way too small. Um, there's new and different equipment, um, uh, from just even a few years ago, they need a place, uh, for storage. Evidence rooms, uh, I know that this is high on the chief's, uh, list, um, they're way too small and, um, there are some legalities that, uh, he's concerned about. Storage, again, um, there is a number of new types of equipment, um, uh, community, uh, gifts and uniforms and, and all the specialty equipment that is, that is now used. Um, the break room gets heavily used, but, um, it is just simply too small. Conference rooms, again, um, they need more of, uh, the appropriate type, size, location. And then, uh, the cops program has, actually, we found out that they're returning to the, to this facility, so, uh, the chief is not sure where he's gonna put them at this point. This is a sample of a program and what it outlines is the, um, space, the name of the space, the type of space, um, what size it is and how many there are. Uh, the, what you see on the left is, uh, the, sort of the center column is what's existing and then the right side is what would be, uh, more ideal. So, this is just a, a sample and the complete program is in your, uh, packet. And, um, the police department, again, um, showing, uh, in this case, locker rooms, fitness, training and so on.
So, when our team looked at the square footage needs of ten years out, we found that the city hall is, is gonna need about twenty-eight percent more space than they currently have, but the police department is, has the biggest high, um, needs and they're gonna need about fifty-three percent more space than they currently have over the next ten years. That equates to about thirty thousand more square feet between the two, two facilities. The biggest drivers for the police department is, um, locker rooms, evidence rooms and, um, storage.
So, these are, um, just a s- a quick summary of some of the things that, uh, that we would recommend. That the, um, municipal court should be separated, um, from the city hall, um, in terms of actual, um, some safety precautions or a physical barrier, that the municipal court should probably stay with the police department in whatever location that would be. So, we looked at, um, a few different, uh, site possibilities, no particular site, but just, um, uh, generalized locations. So, one option to consider is to, uh, just simply relocate the entire facility somewhere else and the no- one notion is to put it in a central location geographical, um, where, uh, where the growth perhaps is occurring and to a, uh, major intersection for, uh, police, um, um, response times. Another option is to, um, relocate the city hall, um, somewhere north, um, perhaps in the, um, downtown district and then again relocate the police department somewhere further south at a major intersection. And the third option is to, uh, leave the police department and the mun- municipal court here in this location and then relocate city hall somewhere else. So, this is a, um, a study of the third option to see if, um, staying on this location is, is feasible or not. So, um, we took this a step further to see how some of these spaces might actually be laid out. So, if you look at the, um, lower left, um, that, uh, bubble is the, the, some of the older portions of the building and, uh, potentially the most, uh, difficult to work with. So, we, um, removed hypothetically, took that, those spaces away and that is what you see on the upper diagram on the left side. So, that line is where, if you're familiar with the building, it's where the double doors are, where it separates the building. And, and in this concept, we would take the municipal court and put it back in its original location, but take out some of the support spaces within that original municipal court to make it, uh, quite a bit bigger and then take some, the adjacent spaces for judge and clerks, plus an IT court remote, um, and the, the clerks' restrooms, a much larger waiting area and then, and then include back again the attorney-client, uh, conference rooms. And then moving to the right, you would see, um, kind of in the middle, upper, sort of that salmon color, that would be a space potentially for police academy or other types of training facilities. Um, the areas that you see in white, generally in the middle, are, are, they stay the, in the functions that they are currently, training room, mechanical, uh, bathrooms and so on. And then down, straight down the page to the purple area, um, including this room here, we would translate or repurpose it into fitness and locker rooms for the police. And then to the right, in the green area, we would start to acquire some of the, uh, lobby space for break rooms, um, expand the roll call, um, repurpose some conference rooms and so on. And then we would essentially take the, the lobby space and secure it. So you would not be able to go down the corridor currently towards city hall. It would be secure. And then roughly halfway through the lobby space, there would be another secure line. So you would, you'd really, the public would be contained within that first area. One of the other significant changes would be to take enlarged evidence processing by moving that up to the northeast corner, currently where the interrogation rooms are. Make that space more utilized. And then that would allow another set of bathrooms for the police department. The lower level is not quite developed, but the notion is that we would repurpose some of those spaces. The current training rooms are on that level. It would either become storage or enlarged armory area, or perhaps continue to be locker rooms for, for the police academy or, or some other use. On the site where you see the far west, we would, we would take that space vacated by the building and add parking dedicated for the municipal court and connect that through with the rest of the parking lots. So this, your site would be fully developed at that point with little or no room for, for growth.
We developed a recommendations timeline to achieve these needs. And this particular timeline talks about that third option for the site where we do some remodeling for additional space for the police department and move the city hall to another location, which would involve building, a new building for them. That puts the police department having additional space after the city hall moves out, March of 2026, which is not ideal in Chief Otterness's space planning needs at this point. So as we, we look further, our recommendations for a, a next step would be to form a exploratory committee. So you guys can look at even, this is taking the last 10 years or the future 10 years of, of needs. And we're suggesting to look even beyond that, maybe 30, 50 years if you can program in the future. And then evaluate efficiencies too with maybe what you could do with the growing West Fargo public schools and the library needs. And then evaluate possible site locations and get the public involved for their input too. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
This is not an actionable item this evening. This is for an informational. Tina, will you, you have another document? Do you want to discuss that at this time?
Yes, first of all, Chief Otterness would like to speak with you about the needs of the PD. And then I will go through with a request for you.
Commission President Dartson, members of the commission, just to clarify a couple of things. Mark and Kim did a great job of, I think, identifying some of the real critical needs for the police department in the short term. As, as the city continues to grow and, and, you know, the demand on public safety, particularly the police department continues to increase well north on average now of 30,000 calls for service per year. We're having to come to you every year to increase our, our staffing numbers. And so one of the issues, probably one of the biggest issues that we have internally in the police department right now is a lack of locker room facilities for our staff. I think most of the commission has been through the police department recently and taken a look at some of our, our needs that are really pressing. And, and when I talk about the locker rooms, it's, it's, you know, it's basic amenities that we have to be able to provide to our staff, both our sworn and non sworn staff. And I can tell you right now that we are currently out of locker space for both our male employees and female employees. So while we've come to the commission preliminarily for the 2023 budget and asked for additional resources in, in terms of personnel, we don't even have the capacity to house those, those folks currently in our locker room. So and part of the concern with our, with our police officers is if you rewind 10 years ago, a lot of the police officers would have enjoyed having a take home black and white squad car, just in terms of, you know, something to, to get them back and forth to work. But today that's very different. Most of our police officers that have assigned marked squad cars don't want those parked outside their house anymore for obvious reasons. And likewise, they don't want to have to wear a uniform in and out of their house every day or in their personal vehicle and come to work because of some things that have happened both locally and on a national level. So I think it's important to be able to, to offer our staff just the most basic of amenities. And that's the ability to, to be able to get ready for work here at work and be able to store some of their equipment here at the police department. In addition to that, we do have a, a real pressing need for storage. They, Kim and Mark touched on it a little bit. We got notified by West Fargo Public Schools that we need to vacate our space that we used to use at the Ladone Center at the library. And so we've been utilizing that for several years for folks within our cops unit, our cultural liaison officer, our community engagement folks, some of our SROs during the summertime that are out doing community outreach and community engagement programs are now having to find their way back into our, our headquarters building here at city hall. And again, with that unit comes a lot of different swag and handouts and things that we do out in the community. And, and we are now to the point where we're having to fill up our, our interview rooms for people that we may have to take into custody. And we don't, so we don't have a capacity to interview people within the, within the police department anymore because some of those rooms are filling up with different personal protective equipment from our COVID pandemic and, and other, other items, again, from, from having to move out of that facility that we've, we've partnered with the school district for many years. So on top of that, they did mention the evidence room. I am concerned, I think all police chiefs are concerned about their evidence rooms, particularly the inability in the, in the very near future to be able to properly store narcotics and firearms. We are nearing capacity for those things, along with just general storage throughout the police department. Our armory is undersized for the things that we need. Our quartermaster supply room is, is. And then the, and then the mention of the, the police academy, I just want to touch real quick and then I'll wrap it up on a recent hiring process that we held. And so we've got, currently we have four vacancies within the police department that we're trying to fill. And we advertised for a traditional hiring process for our human resources department. Nine of those applicants, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but the breakdown of the numbers is nine of those applicants came from the Lake Region State Academy that's that we're currently hosting. One was an internal candidate for a police officer position. We had one external candidate from outside our community or outside the current academy that we have. So I think moving forward, the partnership that we have developed now with Lake Region State College, August 18th, we graduate our first class of, of recruits, police cadets that will graduate from our academy. If it weren't for those folks that were, are currently in our police academy here, we would have had one candidate to draw from because the one external candidate that applied didn't show up for the testing. So now we're down to nine police recruit, recruits and one internal candidate. So I think it's going to be really important moving forward for our hiring and to be able to fill vacancies that we continue that partnership with Lake Region. And, and we have, we have made it work, although, you know, we've, we've made it work, you know, with, with the best that we can do with that training room. And I think we need to dedicate some space to that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have specifically about the police department or some of the things I've talked about.
Questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Having heard what RLE found for the forensic analysis of the police and city hall buildings and the needs of the police department, we all know that city hall is, is tight, but it, it's a bigger concern when you look at the police department and providing them space. And, and I do believe that in order to make intelligent moves going forward, that we need to start making a couple of decisions. And that's why I asked you on the agenda today to, to approve setting up an exploratory committee to look into this. And the exploratory committee, this is just a suggestion. If you have a different idea, we can. But given the situation with the police department, we would like to get something together sooner, not later. The concept behind it would be you'd have two West Fargo city commissioners that are chosen by you as the city commission. One member of the police department administration chosen by the chief of police. One member of city administration chosen by the city administrator. Excuse me. One member of the police department staff, which would be chosen by the police chief. One member of city hall staff chosen by city administrator. And those both would be non-departmental, non-management level. They would be the people that day to day are walking around, seeing all the things and, and dealing with some of the issues. And then out of this committee, there would be one committee leader that would be chosen and that committee would report back to the city commission. Also, we'd like to keep RLE as the consultant to the exploratory committee. One thing that wasn't touched on is I think it's very important to get a good group to look at what's going on because this study, we only looked at 10 years out. We thought the police department would last us 40 years. It's been seven and they're sorely out of space. So the timeline that I gave you in the handout is if you were to approve exploratory committee and appoint two commissioners this evening, then the rest of the members could be appointed. And that committee would hold meetings and follow up on tasks approved by the city commission. They would provide the, the committee, excuse me, the committee would provide the commission recommendations for approval on how to move forward. And this isn't quite, whatever. They would also meet with the schools and meet with the library and anybody else to see if there's a way that we can still combine some resources. I actually have a call into Beth and Levi and I'll be, on Thursday, I'll be doing a Zoom meeting with them to see where they're at so that we can kind of start picking away at what, and give advice to the committee if they're chosen. And by, this would take place from August 1st to October 16th approximately. And then October 17th, this committee would provide a report back to the West Fargo City Commission for directions and next steps. So there would be no decisions made at all. If there's a decision to be made, it's made by the commission. And this is just to look into what are our options. The police department needs space. So would they fit on this space for more than 10 years? Would they sit in this, sit in this space for 40 years because there's no sense in investing more money if all of a sudden five years from now, they can't be here? So you start with those types of things. They could work through all the different areas. And I feel that in order to be, to be forthright with the taxpayers, but also to look out for staff and PD staff, we need to, we need to just start looking at some options. And I think it's, it's very important to consider that thought. What questions you have for me?
Questions for Mrs. Fisk?
I'll make the motion to form an exploratory committee.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the exploratory committee request presented this evening by Mrs. Fisk and Chief Otterness. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I have one comment if I could. Number one is I think that your August 16th is an extremely aggressive, if you've not already polled who, you know, we don't have the membership yet. That's just a comment I want to make.
I'm, I'm sorry, I must have misspoke, President Dartson. I meant October. October, they would come back with some information by October. Sorry about that. I apologize.
Want to comment too?
Please.
Thank you. I think we still have to get two members to go on that committee. We didn't do that with the vote, so.
So you want nominations? You want me to appoint? So Commissioner, what?
Who wants to go on it? There you go.
I think our police commissioner ought to be on it.
That is part of the makeup of the committee that you approved would have either Chief Otterness or, or like Assistant Chief Neeson. My suggestion from administration would be to have Dustin Scott. He's got a lot more experience and he can bring a, a different view to it that I think would be better for the committee. So that would be my suggestion was I'd have Dustin Scott on there, the assistant administrator. And then Chief Otterness could choose who he would want out of his, whether him or he'd want Officer Neeson.
Okay, but I'm going to make a motion, which I'm entitled to do as the chairman. I nominate Brad Olson and Mandy George. Mandy George carries the second portfolio for police with all respect. I'd make that nomination of Commissioner George and Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Simmons, second. Been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your two commissioners.
One more comment, I'm sorry, President Dartson, that I forgot to make was I don't want anyone to think that this is going to be like something that's going to be kept hidden. Part of the job of this committee is to create a timeline that will include getting information out to the public and showing the public what's going on and what they're thinking. And then it'll be, everything will be brought back to the commission. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number three is the presentation of the city of West Fargo's 2021 financial statements and audit. Mr. Jim Larson, Finance Director, City of West Fargo, and Mr. John Hagan of ID Bailey. Pages 80 through 180 in your packets. It has been distributed. Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome.
Good evening, President Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing us to participate. I'd just like to let you know that audit presentation is earlier than last year and that's thanks to the good work done by our auditors, ID Bailey. John Hagan headed up the team, so he's the one that'll do the presentation. There was a request by Commissioner Olson to go through it page by page. I've declined on that if you're okay with that. So I will turn it over to John, who is, like I said, he's the one who performed the audit. He'll cover items of significance in the governance letter and also in the audit report and, and allow for any questions, should there be any. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome, John.
Thank you, guys. I do want to thank you guys for having me tonight. I wish Jim was correct that I could take all the credit for the speedy audit this year, but you know, a large part of that goes back to his team and their help that he gave, they gave us throughout the audit process. Jim did mention the audit, audit financials, about 70 pages. So tonight we're going to be going over the executive summary, which is a condensed version, a little more user friendly, some tables and graphs. Hope makes sense to some of the numbers. So to start, just a general timeline of the audit, we do start our planning procedures in the April, May timeframe. And then the bulk of our work is done during field work where we come on site, perform procedures, and then we do wrap things up, which again, did happen pretty quickly this year and we issued the financials on June 27th. So with that, let's hop into some audit results and findings. As Jim mentioned, there was a new standard this year, which required new formalized language in our governance letter, which is a, a formalized letter which pairs as part of the financial statements. Again, this is new language that was required as part of an audit standard. And it basically just formalized the need to express risks that are associated with every audit. These areas include management override of controls, ensuring that management doesn't have the ability to override any internal controls. The revenue recognition, making sure that revenue reported is the correct dollar amount in the right period. Improper capitalization, capital activity is very important in every city, making sure that those values are reported correctly. And then lastly, misappropriation of assets. Just ensuring that, that all assets. Just ensuring that all assets and funds of the city are being used appropriately. So again, no red flags here. It is a strictly inherent. What we are looking for is audit kind of significant areas that we center some of our procedures around. So no need to do any corrective action plan or anything formalized. More of an auditor, auditor standpoint. So the goal of every audit is to issue an audit opinion. We do that by analyzing what is management responsible for, which is three things, that the financial statements are prepared with the accounting principles generally accepted in the U.S., known as GAAP, that they are free of material misstatements and that they are presented fairly. So through those risk assessment and some of our audit procedures, we come to a final conclusion and issue an audit opinion, which this year is called an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. Ultimately, is exactly what you're looking for. A secondary avenue of our procedures is centered around the federal funds that the city receives. This is required anytime an entity receives $750,000 and expends that dollar amount within a calendar year. The city did receive about 2.4 million in FY '21. Majority of that related to highway and planning construction, federal aid for the Cheyenne project. With this, we do have a separate set of procedures centered around federal compliance with laws and regulations. Again, we do issue a final opinion over this. Again, it was an unmodified or clean bill of health there, too. With an audit opinion, you can still get financial statement findings. As part of the 2021 audit, we do have two formal findings. One for the preparation of financial statements, as well as the related material journal entries. These are very, these two findings are very common for cities of your size. We at ID Bailey do prepare the financial statements to make sure that all the footnotes and everything is in accordance with those U.S. GAAP regulations. And with that, we do prepare and propose a handful of journal entries to ensure that the reporting is proper. Those two are the same findings that you guys have received in previous years and something that I would anticipate to expect in future years as well. The third finding is a special, specialized finding related to this federal area. This is over procurement, suspension, and debarment. It is a requirement of a federal compliance areas over the program that we tested, that the city has a procurement, suspension, debarment policy. Ironically, the city is currently, before we even came out, working on adopting a plan. And I know Jim and team is working to get that formally adopted here shortly. So that finding should be alleviated in future years. So next, we'll get into some of the numbers. I won't spend too much time on a lot of these. Just want to present information with some comparative stuff from previous years. First, we'll look at the cash balances of the city. Again, these are all as of 12/31, and each graph is reported in thousands. First graph here, we have a table with columns broken down by two different areas or two different types of funds for the city. The green being proprietary, your business type, water sewer. And the blue being everything else, your governmental funds, mainly consisting of general fund, capital projects, debt service, and then other miscellaneous special funds. Overall, very good, consistent growth in the last handful of years with good, healthy cash balances. So what does healthy cash balance do for you? One way to analyze this is to look at a liquidity ratio, which is calculated by dividing cash, by dividing cash by current liabilities, including your principal and interest payments that are due within one year. Anytime this is positive, meaning you have healthy cash balances for the future year, more of a short-term analysis here. Next, we'll go into the general fund specific, which is the main operating fund of the city. First graph we hear represents all of the revenues and transfers in for the general fund. Main revenue streams for the city are property taxes, license and permits, intergovernmental aid through both state and federal, and then as some other miscellaneous buckets, as well as the transfers in. As you can see, consistent growth along with the growth of the city. 2020 was a bit inflated because of the additional cares and COVID funding that the city received. So a little bit more back down to normal here in 2021. The transfers that are brought in in the general fund are, consist mainly of a 3% admin and 1% engineering fees that are charged out to capital projects. The flip side of revenues is the annual expenditures for the city. This consists of different departments such as public safety, general government, public works, and other areas. Again, this graph does include the transfers out as well, which were pretty minimal in 2021. But just a little snapshot over the last 10 years, very similar trajectory with the growth of the city. So the net impact of your revenues and expenditures each year does contribute to your fund balance. Having a positive fund balance can do numerous things for the city. Three of the biggest areas are contributing to favorable bond rating, making sure that you guys are getting the best interest rates possible for future bonding. Secondly, producing investment income, having your money work for you in the bank passively is always great. And then third, and most importantly, offering a cushion for unexpected shortfalls in future years. A fund balance is made up of multiple categories. I'm not going to spend too much time in here. Briefly, non-spendables is made up of money that's basically already spent through inventory or prepaid items. Your restricted fund balances are something that's legally restricted. Examples of this are bond payments, stuff like that. And then your last three areas are ultimately up to the discretion of the commission. Through committed and assigned is kind of earmarking money for future projects. And then lastly, your unassigned is kind of your, everything left over. Your kind of rainy day bucket, what you guys truly have at your disposal. Ending fund balances as of 12/31 for the last 10 years is your next graph. Again, the grand majority of your guys' buckets do fall in that unassigned. So there is no, you know, currently earmarked money. Pretty much have the discretion of the commission within the general fund. But kind of regurgitating information, but good growth here over the last 10 years and pretty steady here the last couple. So where should you be? It's kind of the million-dollar question, but there is no right or wrong here. The city does currently have 131% of annual expenditures sitting in that unassigned fund balance. So that basically means the city can operate as-is for just under 16 months with no additional revenue coming in. So a very, very healthy savings deposit, or however you want to look at it. Just kind of sitting there ready for you guys. There is no right or wrong, like I mentioned. I would say general best practice on what we see is roughly around six months. So quite a bit more here at West Fargo. The state does release some information. The most recent information out there is for 2020. And for cities that are roughly the same size of West Fargo throughout the state, they're coming in around a 60% to 70%. So again, quite a bit more here with the city here at 131%. That does kind of conclude my general fund. I'll briefly touch base on a handful of the other funds within the city. First one is your sales tax collections here, as well as a little bit of an interest income, are mainly used to support different areas of the city through capital projects or economic development. Just money collected, and then they don't have any true expenditures. It's just sent out on a transferred basis to other funds of the city. Ending fund balance in the sales tax fund comes in at just under 2 million in FY '21. Again, this can fluctuate year to year depending on timing of transfers and, you know, city determining how they want to utilize those funds. If there's a project they want to fund internally, that's why you'll see some significant fluctuations in this fund. Next, capital projects. Obviously meant for different capital needs and projects throughout the city. Like to joke and say 2021 was more quiet year compared to the last 10 years, but remember, those numbers are in thousands, so about 25 million still in expenditures in FY '21. We all know the city's growing rapidly, so expecting that capital outlay being a consistent and big part going forward as well. For the most part, capital projects funds are funded through debt issuances or transfers in, as well as some state and federal aid mixed in there as well. Ending fund balance in the capital projects is considered a deficit. Again, this can fluctuate year over year, as you can see, depending on the timing of some of those transfers or if money's getting spent internally on a project before a formalized funding is received through bonding. So somewhat of a timing difference here, which is kind of why this graph is a little bit up and down. Next, we'll take a quick look at the business type funds of the city. First, the Water and Sewer Fund, providing water and sewer utilities to residents. Sales and service charges are the mainstream of revenue in these funds. And then operating expenses here are for the distributions required to provide those services, as well as salaries and wages and other administrative and general expenditures. This graph here shows your operating revenues, the top line, followed by your green line of expenditures from operations to derive at your, red line there is kind of your true operational, which is a net positive. And then the yellow line does factor in depreciation, the annual depreciation on the capital infrastructure of the Water and Sewer. So with that, the ending net position for the Water and Sewer Fund does come in at just over 300 million in FY '21, similar to previous years. Another way to look at this is your assets outweighing your liabilities by this amount. Largely, assets in the Water and Sewer Fund are made primarily of capital infrastructure, which is about 97%. The other 3% is made largely of year-end cash. So this is kind of what you guys have on currently available in Water and Sewer Fund for current needs, more of a liquidity, short-term analysis. So current cash holdings in Water and Sewer come in at just around 12 million. The last fund we'll talk tonight is the Garbage Fund, a little bit smaller fund for the city, but providing the garbage and collection services for the city, offset by the utility, sales, and service charges collected for those services. Other expenditures include salaries and wages, administrative in general, as well as depreciation. A little bit more simplified graph here with your top line being revenue, your green line being expenditures, and the offset between the two is your net operating income. Similarly, your ending conclusion of your net position is kind of what's left over year over year. Again, positive, healthy growth here in the general, in the Garbage Fund over the last 10 years. And lastly, your cash position in the general fund does come in at about 3 million. Again, good, healthy growth and will be used for your short-term needs. That does end my spiel tonight. Before I go, does anybody have any questions or certain areas? I know I kind of sped through that, and there's a lot of information.
Questions for Mr. Hagan.
Okay, before I go, I do want to thank Administrator Fisk and Jim Larson, Finance Director, for all their help throughout the audit and the rest of the finance team. You know, we are pretty needy when we're on-site, knowing that they have general day-to-day stuff. So we appreciate all their help. It goes a long way, and they're always a pleasure to work with, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. You don't have any more questions, Commissioners? I'd entertain a motion to accept the 2021 audit.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2021 financial statement and audit. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four is the first reading of the Ordinance 1213 on Investments. Mr. Larson, Finance Director, City of West Fargo, is in pages 181 to 184 in the packet.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners. I'm going to just move this around back to Commission Agenda. Being presented tonight is Ordinance Number 1213. This is in regards to some modification on how we can invest funds with the City of West Fargo. Currently, we're earning about a 0.35% on our funds, which is very challenging, let's just say that. We'd like to improve that, and we've worked with a financial institution, First International Bank and Trust, to be able to provide a product that would allow us to invest the funds of the City of West Fargo and hopefully get about a 2.5% to 2.7% return. And that's significant for us in regards to our budget and our financial resources. In order to do that, though, there are some required restrictions within the Sentry Code. But being a home rule-based community or city, we are able to make some modifications via ordinance. As far as the legalities of that, I will defer that totally to our legal counsel. But basically, we've asked our legal counsel to consider drafting the ordinance, which he has done, to allow us to be able to take advantage of this investment tool that is available to the city. There are other communities that have used ordinances like this to make modifications. The City of Fargo is one. But I'd like to make one significant difference between what we're proposing versus what others have used. We have not allowed a downgrading of the investment quality that is set by Sentry Code. We still require it to be fully backed and to not have the risk of a change in the market as we have. I'm sure those of you who have any kind of retirement investments have noticed that probably about a 30% loss in the last four to five months. And that's not allowed for a city. So what we're asking tonight is for consideration of the commission to approve the first reading of the ordinance as presented. And I would also defer any questions to Mr. Shockley as well.
Questions for Mr. Larson. Questions for Mr. Shockley.
Make the motion, put on first reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. We have a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1213 and Investment Policy as presented by Mr. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1213 and the Investment Policy of the city and amending the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Item number five is the Dickey Rural Services Incorporated, AKA Ready Tech, a fiber optic data franchise, Ordinance 1211. I don't have any, who's presenting. Mr. Shockley's making eye contact, so. City Attorney, Mr. John Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Before the City Commission, you have Ordinance Number 1,211, granting Dickey Rural Services, better known as Ready Fiber Tech, or Ready Tech, a franchise to operate fiber to the home. This is, I believe, they appeared about six weeks ago before the City Commission to answer some questions about kind of the technical nature of what they're proposing to do. But essentially, they're looking for a franchise to install fiber to the home in the city right-of-way. In order to do that, they need a franchise ordinance and then ultimately, an agreement between the city and their company. And this is the ordinance. The next meeting, we'll have the second reading of the ordinance and then the agreement. You'll note that with this type of service, we can't collect a franchise fee because it's regulated by the Public Service Commission. And they have preempted the authority of political subdivisions to collect franchise fees. That said, we can still regulate when and how they dig in the right-of-way and when they need to relocate the wires if there's a city project going on. Happy to answer any questions. I'm not necessarily comfortable with the technical aspects of answering about the fiber, but I can find somebody who might be able to. fiber, but I can find somebody who might be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Questions for Mr. Shockley? Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. What, John, what, like, other companies are competing? Is this against, like, Midco? And, I mean, what is exactly, are they planning on doing, bringing in, into whom?
So this would, my understanding is this is the first company that would bring fiber to the home. What you currently have now is non-fiber internet services. Fiber technology brings a higher bandwidth and more capacity for your internet computing. And so some communities have fiber to the home, but it is, it's like a step above what the current cable companies would provide to their services. This is a non-exclusive franchise, so if another company wants to bring fiber to the home, they're certainly more than welcome to.
Yeah, because I know we do have fiber now that come to the homes. It's just maybe not, the Midco provides fiber, I'm pretty certain.
I don't believe that they do. Fiber is quite expensive to install, and so it, some companies have just started doing it. Midco may do it in the future, but it's entirely a private business decision to install fiber.
Okay, and they're going to take care of all the, if they tear up yards and whatever they do, do they still have to get permission from the homeowner?
Yeah, this is, they couldn't just show up and hook your home.
And start, start, right, okay, that's all.
Do they have to file any of their work plans with the engineering?
Yeah, that's, and well, it's covered in the ordinance, and then also, we're going to have an agreement in place with them also that would cover that. And probably more important from my position is that when the city undertakes a project, they have to move their fiber at no cost to the city, which I think is really important for the different city projects. If engineering is putting in a new pipe or a new road, not having to pay to relocate their existing utilities can be quite costly.
With them filing their work plans with engineering, planning and zoning, do we provide any type of inspection service to make sure they're in the public right-of-way and not on private property or whatever the case might be? Do we have, do we have outgoing expenses for this agreement?
I'm going to have to defer to Dustin or Dan about our process for utilities. Typically, those expenses, we would try to bill back to the utility provider, but I don't know the specifics of how the inspections go on.
Good evening, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Yes, great question. We do have right-of-way management policy adopted by the City Commission. We do charge a permit fee to work within our right-of-way. We also charge a daily fee, depending on the nature of the activity. That daily fee ranges from $100 to $250 for significant work, like last year's Excel Energies project. When it's just a simple, like a fiber connection or a cable line that's going across, it's usually a $20 a day fee, but those fees are collected. We do have staff that go out, take a look at the work, make sure that things are in compliance before we release that permit or final approval of that permit, so.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Yep.
Commissioners, additional questions, if anyone? Thank you. I am looking for a motion to authorize or not authorize Ready Tech, Dickey Rural Services, a fiber-optic franchise.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the rural, Dickey Rural Services Incorporated, AKA Ready Tech, fiber-optic data franchise for the City of West Fargo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six is to approve an agreement with Burian and Associates to write and submit a BRIC grant, B-R-I-C, grant for a redundant lift station. Mr. Matt Anvik, Director of Public Works, City of West Fargo. It is in the packet, it is pages 193 to 11. Welcome, Mr. Anvik.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Find this one real quick. Yeah, I kind of have a long title on that one for, to approve the agreement, but I'll just kind of do a quick presentation on what I was actually meaning by that. Just kind of a BRIC, overview of the BRIC grant itself, is it's the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant. It's a FEMA grant that goes through, it's a 75% federal cost share, 25% non-federal, that would be the local share, it'd be 25%. You know, in 2020, there was 700 million available within the United States. Right now, there's over 1 billion available. They have different kind of grants. One is more of a local one, and that's kind of the project scoping grant, is what we're applying for first. It's kind of like almost a two-step process to do that. And then the mitigation product, the projects are the ones that are the more competitive national grants, and which would, we'd be going for right now would be the capability and capacity, and just more of a scoping grant for this year. And then the, kind of the project drivers of, you know, why now, I guess is the big thing. One is the amount of money that's out there right now, and the cost share, two, something like this. And then, I guess one of the main one is the lagoon decommissioning. Right now, we have one lift station that handles all the sewage from the City of West Fargo that pumps it to either the lagoons or the City of Fargo. Once those lagoons are gone, that is really going to hamper, or we don't have any capacity then, right? It has to go, so if something happens at lift station, basically, the majority of people in West Fargo are going to have sewage backup in their homes, or we're going to be dumping it into the diversion or different places, which is going to be quite a headache for us to do. So that's why we're looking at, you know, down in the future of a bypass and redundancy to create another one in case of, you know, a natural disaster, or be able to work on a lift station and have it down for a little while and not have to worry about sewage backup or any problems. And then another part of this is just that future growth. Once the lagoons are decommissioned and that further growth, kind of to the northwest that are extraterritorial, is we're going to need a lift station to handle that. And by doing a master lift station that can handle the redundancy of all the, basically, sewage coming from what is West Fargo now, but being able to handle what is coming in the future. So this is, kind of just covers the project phases. For right now, we're just kind of doing that, this was what we go into the agreement with. You know, like, task one is just information request. They're going to review everything, plan, and then we have to really get into the sizing of it. What are we going to need to do, and how much is this project going to cost us? I guess is really where we're going to go with that. You know, get the documentation, write the grant, and submit it. So like I said before, this is kind of a, you know, while we're in front of you right now, is this a three-phase plan, right? The first one is the concept planning, what we're doing now and applying for that scoping grant. If we are successful and get that scoping grant, then we're going to do the preliminary engineering and basically design everything to submit for the national grant. Then once we get that national grant, then we can do the bidding, construction, and design. So we're looking at, you know, probably 2026 before we're actually going to be done, so we're looking that far out. But what is pushing is that, is we'd like to get that in place before lagoons are completely decommissioned, so we don't have that overlap and we're not kind of cutting ourselves short with storage in case something does happen. So as you see in there, too, all, every one of this parts are able to go the 75%, 25% cost share. So if we were awarded the scoping grant, whatever the dollar figure we put in right now, we could go back and apply that to that grant. So I think, I believe the, is a little over 49,000 is what the agreement is for right now. The grant would cover 75% of that. So we wouldn't be on the hook for the entire 50,000 of the agreement that we're asking right now. As we move forward, top of my head, right now, we're figuring about 16 million for this, which means the federal government picks up about 12, our cost share is four if we get that grant. So I think that would be a positive for the city. So I guess this is, our recommendation is to approve the agreement with Burian Associates to write and do the research on this grant, to apply for the scoping grant, which is due, I believe, in February, March, but we want to make sure we submit it in about January, so that's why we're kind of moving forward with it now. And the amount is 49,650, and if we're successful, we'd only have, I guess our cost would be 25% of that, if we're successful. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Kellen Grubb and Steve Burian from Burian Associates are here for any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Anvik. Questions for Mr. Anvik? Commissioner Simmons?
Matt, what, I know it looks like we're going for 16 million and basically investing 50,000 into it. What are the odds? I guess, what are they telling you, the odds that we could get this grant? What are the?
This, the first one is kind of more statewide, and I think it had in there, I think about, in 2020, it was about 80%, success rate of getting that. When the conversations that Kellen and we've had with the state, kind of the FEMA guy that handles a lot of these, we hit a lot of the criteria. There's a criteria with the scoring, and we hit just about every one of them on this, so our odds are really.
Would you repeat that? I didn't hear you, Matt.
There's a.
Scoring system?
Scoring system, and we score in just about every one of them. So this project itself, because it's basically protecting the entire city plus future parts, is what they're really looking for. A lot of the national grants that get this are, like, Ringdikes around, or levees around towns, different things like that. The City of Fargo has received a couple of these, but that was, I think, prior to the BRIC grant, it was the same kind of grant itself, but.
Would they be taking the diversion into account, though?
No.
Because if they would, obviously, that would hurt us.
Well, the diversion really wouldn't matter with this, because this is just purely wastewater itself.
Okay.
So this is, you know, if, say if a tornado came through and took down SA 40 right now and took the pumps out, we would really have no way to pump any sewage either to the lagoons. I mean, we'd have a bypass, so we could get some, but because of the pressure, we'd still end up with sewage in a lot of homes.
Okay, thank you.
I think, what you were getting at was, would there be any competition from the diversion for the same kind of grant?
Exactly right.
Oh, I don't, I don't believe so. I think they're on a, be a separate, they're, well, if they would have, they already had, would have had to apply for it already. So since they're already in motion, I don't.
I'm sure consultants would have a good idea.
I think they would.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, so this project is just for the FEMA BRIC program, and my understanding is that the FM diversion, area diversion project is not being funded, or they're not applying for FEMA BRIC dollars, to my knowledge. So this is a completely different funding source. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Have we ever applied for, is this totally new this year, or has that we ever applied for a BRIC grant before?
I don't believe we have. This was something actually Kellen brought to us here about a year and a half ago, when we first were starting, talking about the lagoon decommissioning. We thought that might be a project. No, Dustin. He's got the history on it.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Really, the BRIC grant is only a couple of years old. Before that, it was the pre-disaster mitigation grant and the hazard mitigation grant program, which, back in 2009, we did participate in the hazard mitigation grant program, where we bought out a house on Francis Street. Aside from that, though, we have not pursued this particular program, either its predecessor, the pre-disaster mitigation, or the BRIC. There is another project, a lift station for downtown area, that we are going to be pursuing, potentially a BRIC grant as well, but we're still pursuing other grant opportunities through the state.
So what's the significance of using a consultant to write this grant? We do not have the expertise in-house?
That's a great question. The BRIC grant, especially when you go out for the nationally competitive dollars, the big dollars for the construction. When Matt mentioned that we'll start with the state level, that's going to be for the design, the preliminary design efforts. That's a relatively small grant. When we get into talking 10 to 15 million dollars of a federal grant that's nationally competitive, yes, not only do we need to write an application or grant a 30-page document, but there's also preliminary engineering work that needs to go in there, engineering analysis, modeling, things of that nature that you hire experts to do. No, we do not have that type of expertise on staff. We certainly could submit an application, but Commissioner Simmons asked earlier, what is our chances? And I would say our chances are none if we produce this in-house with a consultant. They are still pretty small, but I think we've got a good fighting chance if we use a consultant to help with this.
Commissioner Simmons?
Just one quick question, and no offense to you folks, but have we vetted this company? I mean, was there a committee or somebody that, I mean, do we pick them out of the yellow pages, or have you guys worked with them before, I guess?
I'll keep talking, I guess, since I'm at the podium, but I'll let others chime in if I'm missing something, but both Tina and I have a working relationship with both, Mr. Burian and Kellen Grubb, and.
That's fine. That's good enough for me.
Additional questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Anvik. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George, second. Been moved and seconded to approve an agreement with Burian and Associates to run, write, and submit a BRIC grant for the redundant lift station as presented by Mr. Anvik and Mr. Scott this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven is the final approval and conditional use permit for an accessory structure greater than 1,600 square feet in Nelson Acres. Mr. Malachi Peterson, City Planner, City of West Fargo, is in pages 212 through 221 in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President and Commissioners. The applicant has provided a site plan, which proposed building a 50 by 80-foot or 4,000-square-foot accessory structure to be built northwest of his home, which is located in Nelson Acres. This area is zoned R-R Rural Residential. This zoning district allows for accessory structures greater than 1,600 square feet, but only with a conditional use permit, which is what he's here applying for tonight. Oversized accessory buildings have traditionally been approved as a CUP within the Nelson Acres subdivision. In 2004, the city received an application for a 9,600-square-foot building, which was scrutinized as not being within the character of the subdivision. The applicant revised the request to a 4,800-square-foot structure, which was approved. Other buildings to date since that time period have been held to the same standard. Therefore, staff believes that the size precedent should be also considered within this instance as well. The accessory structure will be constructed with metal panel siding and a metal roof. The applicant has stated that there will be no issues adhering to the construction standards for accessory structures within this area. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to the issuance of any building permits. Applicable staffs and agencies, as well as residents within 350 feet, were notified, and we didn't receive any comments to date. The application is recommended by staff to be approved, and at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 12, 2022, they recommended approval of the conditional use permit with staff recommendations as noted. I'm here tonight in case you have any questions, and the applicant is also present as well.
Questions for Mr. Peterson? All right, thank you. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, second. It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the conditional use permit for the accessory structure greater than 1,600 square feet in Nelson Acres, and that is at 4,000 square feet, as presented by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item eight is the final approval of a five-year Renaissance Zone project in the Rested Industrial Park. Malachi Peterson, City Planner, City of West Fargo, is in pages 222 to 240 in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President and Commissioners. Rusted Properties LLC is requesting a five-year Renaissance Zone incentive worth approximately $85,008 to build a 10,000-square-foot industrial space for lease. The property where the building is proposed to be constructed is currently vacant and zoned for light industrial, and is owned by Rusted Industrial Park LLC, which is a sister company. and is owned by Rusted Industrial Park LLC, which is a sister company to the applicant. The applicant estimates that the project will create two full-time employees to oversee the space until it can be released or rented out. The employees are expected to earn an hourly wage of seventeen dollars and fifty cents with an estimated hourly benefits at ten dollars. The location of the building would be within the Rusted Industrial Park, which is a grouping of buildings, which has previously received the Renaissance Zone incentives for both new construction and leasing of space to tenants, which they've received those incentives in late two thousand nineteen. The goal of North Dakota Renaissance Zone program is to revitalize communities in the state and encourage development through tax incentives. Qualifying activities for a Renaissance Zone project include the purchase, rehabilitation of new construction or lease of the property located within the identified Renaissance Zone block. The applicant estimates the anticipated, anticipated building value after the project will be one point one million dollars. Currently, the true and full value of the property is estimated at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The estimated state income tax benefit to the applicant if they receive this incentive would be approximately seventeen hundred and fifty dollars for the five-year period. The estimated property tax benefit to the applicant if they receive this incentive would be eighty-five thousand and eight dollars for the five-year period. And that estimate comes from the city assessing office. At their July seventh meeting, the Economic Development Advisory Committee unanimously voted to recommend approval of the five-year incentive. I'm available tonight in case you have any questions. And then a representative of the applicant is also here tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Questions for Mr. Peterson? So what are in the existing buildings that they applied for incentives now? What type of businesses are there?
So from the ones that they received tax incentives for in two thousand nineteen, included, I believe, some different industrial uses, including, I believe there's a trailer company. I, I'll have Nancy Peterson, she's the representative here, come up and talk a little bit more about that because I'm not sure what's all gone into those buildings since that incentive was approved back then.
Good evening, Mrs. Peterson. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Commissioners. The existing buildings that are there, the two buildings, the first one is, he's got his business in there with trucking and all types of work with that that's related to that type of delivery work and around North Dakota. The second building involves some trucking and industrial-type representation as well as a construction company and also another outlet that does supply work with farming, farmers and things like that at this point.
Mr. Peterson, a question for you. When those incentives were initiated, do you have in the records, this is a speculative building at this time? Did we have a known uses of what the buildings would be used for?
We did. So at that time, I think Vista's trailers, there was Halverson's LLC, and then there was a couple of different sort of sub-businesses that were going to be leasing out space. A lot of them, Ryan Rusted had some sort of ownership stake within those businesses at the time. And there were business incentive agreements that were required to be sent to the state, which stated the purposes of, of those businesses.
Does engineering have any concerns with the type of infrastructure we have in place for that heavier industrial type of trucking companies or whatever? Are there any issues there?
I don't believe so because the, it's a, the trucking company isn't a large user of water. It's more of a property office.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioners, any additional questions you have?
So would, what kind of business do you anticipate to put in there? Would it be related to the existing businesses or you, you're just fishing for somebody to come locate there?
Well, Ryan, first of all, apologizes for not being here tonight, but his internal office, somebody turned positive and he felt out of respect. He would not come and take a chance of exposing anybody if he ever had it. So that's why he's not here to speak. But with the spring being so wet and everything else being behind for construction and everything, we had a number of people that we thought were going to be able to do that, but they had, they had to make a decision faster in order to get their businesses going. So we do have some very strong people that are working with him. As far as, one was towards a roofing-type company that has been under discussion. Another company that's been now catering to, or courting towards him is an industrial display-type corporation. We've even had some serious discussion with an exercise company. So there's a few that are out there, but because of the fact that the property couldn't start construction because of everything that's going on, this has been a crazy year in many ways. We're hoping that we can start by the middle of September and then start locking down some dates and some numbers in which that they can live with. So there has been, you know, definitely some very strong interest and things like that. So he's hoping that it should go forward in a very strong manner and have a lot more employees that would be there with those individual companies.
Commissioner George?
Is this a project you would do either way with or without the incentive? Or do you need the incentive to move the project forward?
Well, the incentives are very important because the people that are looking at coming in and starting their business and expanding and things like that, one especially is not a company that's from here, that's looking at our area to do something. The incentives are very important because it does reflect the numbers of them getting into something and start to grow. So the numbers are very important to this type of work, yes.
Additional questions? Anything else additional, Mr. Peterson?
Nothing to add, no.
Commissioners?
I guess I better rely on the Economic Development Committee. They made a motion to approve this, did they not?
Correct. They recommended approval.
Recommend it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please? Is there a second, please?
Well, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. It's been moved and seconded to approve the five-year Renaissance Zone project in the Rusted Industrial Park as presented by Mr. Peterson, our city planner, and is in pages twenty-two, two twenty-two to two forty in your packet. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to, four to one vote, excuse me. We're going to take a few-minute break here. The agenda is quite long. And so we'll be recessed for about three to five minutes, please.
There's a road somewhere, right? What does she want to do before she gets going? Here, here somewhere? Under my deal, okay. 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 Okay, ready here, okay. First one? And where's that road going? Where's that, is that Harshlap?
This is Harshlap. This is where all the recycling is here.
Yeah.
The water towers over here.
You want to go right through there. What's that road off here?
That, that leads, that's the service road to the water tower.
Oh, okay.
Leads us to the water tower and then out to Florida.
Okay.
We'll reconvene the meeting. We are at item number nine. Request for an access easement at Chi West Garden Center. Mrs. Jordi Collins is here to visit with us about that. It is on pages two forty-one to two forty-five in your packet. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. I would like to just open it up for questions after I give a brief description of what we're looking for. The front page of your packet is a map. If anyone is interested in an additional copy, I have a few extras. The, the only item that I'm looking for at this time is, on the left-hand side of that document, there's some small yellow lines that provide a punch across where it says City of West Fargo Recycling Drop Off. That's the only area in question. There is a tree line there currently. And what we're running into is, we've kind of got a challenging entrance. The, there's a berm across Forty-Fifth that restricts access from people turning when they're driving to the west. So people can't take a left-hand turn and what's happening is they are turning past that on, onto Fourth there and they're turning into the recycle center. And then they're leaving the recycle center and taking a U-turn back into our lot. And that's the main point of, of entry rate at this moment. And my fear is, and I've, I've tried to continually say this, that if people are taking that U-turn back into our lot, that someone might miss a car coming and, and get hit on their driver's door. So what we're hoping for is, again, I want to impress upon you that this is a condition that's already happening and there are already cars inside the city recycle center lot. We want to be able to allow those cars to pass through that tree row and provide an entrance into our lot so that they don't have to leave the recycle center and come right back into our lot immediately, just to provide a little protective entry so that we don't have that double back, the U-turn back into our lot. Because they could do one of two things. They could hit a car that's trying to exit our lot because a lot of people are swinging wider than they should with the double entrances there. Or they could get T-boned on their driver's door when they're, when they're turning and doing a U-turn. If they're leaving the recycle center lot, there's traffic coming at them. And so what I, I just wanted to try to provide us a very short access. We were looking for about a thirty-foot easement through that tree, tree row, something small to provide a concrete access point. And I do want to make one other small comment. We are willing to foot the bill for the entire concrete path there and, and also happy to have that engineered. And the city attorney or whoever would write up that easement, we would pay for those expenses as well. We don't expect the city to foot any part of this bill. We, we're just looking for the easement.
So could you show us with the cursor where you want, where you want to put the road?
Right in this small area here.
Yeah, you want to go across.
Yep. If you flip through your packet, actually, the very last page shows kind of what that-
So just, I'm sorry, I can get a better look. I see that, but I can get a better look.
Right here in this-
So you want them to turn on Fourth Street Southwest?
They're, they're already turning and coming in here and then they're leaving the, the lot and turning back into ours. So what I'm trying to provide is people that are already coming through here to provide a, a short punch through here. There's other cars that definitely just come this way and turn into our lot. But the traffic that's already turning in and, and trying to get out that are already turned around and a little bit confused, trying to figure out how to enter our lot. They're, they're coming up here and then they're looking to the left, looking to the right, looking back and trying to turn into our lot.
Right.
And so they're, they're already entered into the city recycle center a lot of the time and they're trying to understand that, how to, how to get back into our lot.
But my concern is I don't even want them going through our recycle lot. And I realize they're already doing it, you're saying, but this will just enhance them to do it even more.
Right. I wasn't-
Is there another option we have?
I, I wasn't looking for any signage to promote people to move in that direction. I just wanted to provide safe passage through the trees for the ones that are currently using it that way.
But unfortunately, it will promote, you know, even though you don't want to, it will promote having vehicles go through that. Is there another option that we could look at?
Um, I-
Maybe perhaps Dustin, I'm sorry, may I, I hate to, I apologize.
Continue.
Dustin, if there's, I mean, I think we, I think we need to look at other options than just going through that lot with all, with the traffic because that's our, that's our lot. That's city-owned property.
Right.
And we don't want a traffic, two-lane tra, you know, going through there. I, yeah, let's, see if Dustin has something to contribute.
And one other comment before-
Please, Commissioners.
Right now, for people who want to leave Chi West and go, and go west, if that was there, it would be that much more traffic going through the recycle lot to get to Fourth Street and then enter onto Forty-
That's my-
And then go and take a left out there.
Correct. It would be a two-lane-
There'd be a lot, a lot of traffic in the recycling and that's, um, There'd be a lot, a lot of traffic in the recycling and that's, um, um, busy the way it is.
Is it possible to go south of the water tower? For a road?
That's city-owned property as well.
But it wouldn't be through the lot?
Is there somewhere back there Dustin? Yeah, where your cursor is that, or can we not? There's a lot of, you know, I'm saying, you understand what I'm saying? Is there somewhere south of there where, like where the, is there a road we could, or they could put in to get to their, the, the south end of their property over there off of Cheyenne Street? We probably can't even do that. I don't know, but.
Yeah, uh, good question Commissioner Simmons. Uh, thank you Commissioners. Uh, we've, we've visited with, uh, Jody a couple of times over the years and, um, the, the exact detail escapes me, but I believe one of the options that we offered in the past was to, uh, potentially give some city land, uh, here. Uh, but yes, getting a road to the south here, connecting it to Cheyenne Street. Um, and that would provide, you know, a, a loop network, if you will. Uh, but with the access control on Cheyenne Street, likely when it's reconstructed in the future, you know, our, our typical spacing for a, a full access is six hundred and sixty feet. So, um, it, it may be still a limited right-in, right-out access and so there's still going to be potentially the desire for, for someone to, you know, spin around this median or to come through here accidentally and cut through. But there is, there is, there is another option to look to the south. There's certainly land there, of course, it's city land, but whether or not it would solve exactly what they're looking for, I'm not sure, but that, that's been offered to them in the past. Um, I can let Matt talk about the, the issues with allowing traffic through our facility, but you're already kind of touching on some of those concerns. Um, the, the other concern I would have, i- it's not just that the, the customer traffic, you know, in their, in their sedans or trucks. Uh, the other concern just gets to be the, the delivery truck, semis, larger vehicles that would come through here. Um, and so I, I understand that access is an issue here, uh, but coming through our, our facility and our site is something that staff is certainly, uh, not, not recommending. Of course, this is why they're here before you to, to see if, if you would have other considerations for it. Um, so, yeah, the, the long story short would be, there's potentially some other options to the south, but I'm not sure that's going to be, to, to meet their, what they're looking for, so.
Have there been any accidents, um, with people doing the U-turn right there?
I, I'm not sure.
Um, what we're running into is people are, I'm worried that it's about to happen anytime because they run over the landscaping to avoid one another when someone is coming at them and they're leaving. And it's also, um, because I'm concerned about the bike traffic as well. It causes a, a little bit of extra congestion, because when someone's trying to turn in and do a U-turn and there's also bike traffic that compounds the problem, I just don't want someone to get hurt. And no, I'm, I'm not aware of any traffic incidents, but there's been very many near misses. And if I get eight complaints or ten complaints out of, um, anyone at the store, eight of them are for access into the site and some of our traffic, a good number are older women that, um, might be, that's, that's a main staple person that would be attending our, our place of business and I want to make sure that we don't have anyone that gets hurt because of a little bit of confusion with that. Um, uh, one of the pages in the packet, because you've touched on maybe another option we had asked for, this was a, a drawing that I did as a schematic. Um, there's a, it's the third page in your document. Um, right here, since I have this available, um, this, this city-owned land here, they use to dump a lot of snow and then in the summertime they've, they've done very little with it. Um, so what I had asked for, um, previously was maybe we could facilitate to beautify it a little and do some community gardens with that empty space, because it wouldn't impede the use of, for snow removal. So you see that L-shaped roadway? Um, I don't think it needs to be that long, because the one kickback that we did get was we had come back over here, um, it, with that L on the drawing. Um, if we were able to egress the lot and come straight back, it would shorten it quite a bit. Um, that same pathway might be an option. I do get worried about any traffic, um, for this person's sake at this home. That's, or, or we could angle it with that lot, um, here to help get away from that driveway a little bit. Um, the only other comment I'm, I'm sure that Dustin will make is, we've been told to stay away from the water tower as well for security purposes. So I really do want to be very agreeable with whatever the commission could help me come up, up with something, but I know that we have a lot of traffic in our store and it's only going to continue to improve, which means get worse for the amount of people. Um, in the packet, the second page that you've got, we're trying to host, um, markets that the city of West Fargo Park District, um, has given to us fully. We're trying to grow this for the community's sake and I, I fear that the busier that we do get is going to cause somebody to get hurt and I, that's why I'm before you today, is, as I'm, I'm begging. I want to make sure that this is a safe entrance into the lot and I, I do not want to impede on extra traffic for, um, for, for any, any, um, current use of the space, but I, I don't want someone to get hurt and I, I only want safe access.
Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you. So, okay, so, thank you, Mandy. Um, I don't think that's going to work going down that road, because that's just going to prolong it. People are going to still take the shortcut first. That's just nature to me. But what, it, it appears as if you're not supportive of doing an, a writing at the, on, uh, Cheyenne Street to your south.
I've been told I'm not allowed to do that and also it's not just a city road, it's a county road, which means that we would have a lot more restrictions.
Well, that's a city road now, so that wouldn't, county wouldn't have anything to do with it. Dustin, could you talk about that, please? Because I, to me, that's the best option. If we were to do anything, would be south of that, then it'd be a right-in, right-out and people wouldn't take a left, so.
We were told that that had to happen down here and then there would have to be, um, a turn back in on like a frontage road scenario, because we did cross that path when we were working on our initial entry and engineering brought us away from that as an option and told us because of the drainage into that current pond.
Well, let's hear from them now and see what they have to say this time around.
Yeah, that's, that's where the exact details are escaping me, but I thought we did offer an option to connect to Cheyenne Street, which, uh, yes, it is, it is a city roadway down to Fifty Second Avenue. We do have spacing requirements, so I, I forget the exact detail of how that would work. Um, I would say that until there's a median on Cheyenne Street, there would have to be some kind of like a pork chop median put in here. It's similar to what's over at the Eagle Run Plaza, uh, just a mile to the north of this. When, and I'm going to get to that. Well, uh, let's see if I can change the, here of the, yeah. So if, if you're familiar with the Eagle Run Plaza here, there's, it's called a pork chop median, but something like this would have to be constructed so that we facilitate a right-in, right-out movement. Um, but something like that would be possible on Cheyenne Street. I'm not saying it's a guarantee that it will work, that we will approve it and it will work, but it's something, it's an option worth exploring. And I, like I said, I can dig up some of the email correspondence from a couple of years ago, uh, but I do recall that there, there was something drafted that we were, um, in favor of tying into Cheyenne Street.
Thank you. Commissioner George has a question.
Um, I'll just, I'll just say my opinion on this. So I think the safety concerns are real that she's talking about and I think we do, they do need to be addressed. So whether we go south of the water tower and to the left or to the right, I mean, I think those are both good options. I like, I like the option to the, to the left, which would then, you know, provide, uh, people to be able to go up that road and then make a left turn out. And when she mentioned community gardens, that really caught my attention, because I'm on Cass Clay Food Commission and that is something we talk about in West Fargo specifically. We're really lacking community gardens and she gives us an option where they're willing to do it. And now granted, we'd be, you know, making a compromise there. We're allowing her to have city land that would help everybody and then she's doing a community garden that entices the entire community and helps everybody. I think that's a really positive thing and a win-win for everybody, so that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Commissioner George, but again, my only concern is going to the left is that people are going to take that shortcut, because that, that's the path of least resistance. So I understand that, but I would like to make a recommendation that we table this discussion and we have further input from the staff and, and try to come up with some solutions, work with her and, and then come back. Rather than try to make this decision tonight, I think it's too quick for us. Mayor, is that, uh?
Commissioners?
That's, that's- Is that a motion?
That would be a motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to table it. I don't believe it's, uh, debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So we would instruct Jody, if you, uh, Ms. Callis, excuse me, if you'd please visit with engineering and/or Mr. Scott, because of his past experience and history with dealing with this, uh, set up in a meeting and, uh, talk about those possibilities and we'll, we'll see what the probability is of the various elements that have been discussed this evening, including the possibility of that pork chop medium. That's, that's an interesting engineering term, isn't it? Uh, uh, you know, on Cheyenne Street and the like. I hope that's acceptable to you, but that's the wishes of the commission, so, uh, further discussions and we'd welcome you back, uh, after those discussions take place.
Is there a timeline or anything that I have to buy?
Let's, uh, I don't have the, I don't have my calendar with me. Uh, what's the, uh, second meeting in August? What's the, what's the, uh?
August fifteenth?
August fifteenth.
Can I be put back on the agenda?
Is that enough time for you?
I want it done soon as possible, because it's already two years.
We understand that, but, uh, we'll give it to the second meeting in August. That way it should give staff plenty of time to do their research and their due diligence.
So will I, should I table or refill out the website online, just to clarify? Or will I be put back on the agenda at that time? How would that be?
Mrs. Fisk?
We will just automatically, I just wrote it down and I'm sure Emily did too. We'll just automatically put you on that agenda unless you call us and tell us not to.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, item number ten is project number thirteen sixteen point two. Northside Regional Sanitary Sewer Collector, uh, Discussion. Mr. Dan Hanson, city engineer, city of West Fargo. It is in the packet. It is pages two forty-six to two fifty-one and, uh, he is looking for an actionable item to approve change order number one. Good evening, Mr. Hanson, and welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. Um, in, in the packet, as he stated, is, uh, change order number one for project thirteen sixteen point two, the Northside Regional Sanitary Sewer Collection Rehabilitation. Uh, it is a sizable change order. I would like to give a brief history of, uh, how we got to here, uh, to this point where we have this change order in front of the commission. And, uh, basically, uh, I'm going to go into the exhibits. There's two parts of this change order. The first part is, uh, an easier part to describe, because there's a, some proj- uh, there's some land that's owned by Southeast Cass, that does have some sanitary sewer and water main running through, uh, closer to the middle of it, that originally, when this project was bid out, we bid it out with the installation of some sanitary sewer, uh, where I'm showing along that, uh, along that driveway. Uh, since then, uh, we don't know the anticipated use of that land and as this, uh, portion of the infrastructure is not critical to the development of that land and can be done at a future time, uh, it was, uh, recommended that we remove that installation, that pipe, from the project in the event that maybe somebody comes and develops it where they don't need to move that pipe in the future. But, um, so that was actually a deduct part of this change order, uh, you know, approximately about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, again, that's the easier part. Uh, in between these two sites is the, is the Cheyenne diversion and, and right now included, uh, not included in the current bid project is any of this work that's on the west side of the Cheyenne diversion here. Uh, the sanitary sewer that comes across the Cheyenne diversion, right now comes north and connects up to SA forty. That's the lift station that we were talking about earlier, that, uh, basically pumps all of our sewage to Fargo. Uh, it's a very large, uh, main, thirty-six inch main, that actually is located on diversion property. Uh, this change order actually extends that sanitary sewer main to the west and then north to connect up to SA forty, placing that new sanitary sewer on city-owned property. Now, a couple, uh, additional, uh, items of information on this is, this information and this work was intended to be done. It was included in the amended engineers' report that was approved by the commission last spring to do this. Uh, based off of that decision, uh, they worked on getting a four oh eight permit to abandon this existing line and in that amended engineers' report, it actually states on, it, that this work would be, uh, included in a future change order or potentially bid as its own project and that this work is also listed in the twenty twenty-three, in the, in the current CIP, uh, for a twenty twenty-three project in the neighborhood of, uh, one point seven two five million dollars for this work. So this is, this is work that we anticipated. Uh, we got to the point where the, we have the four oh eight in hand, we have the ability to do the work and we have a contractor that is under contract right now in KPH that has given us, uh, change order prices that he said will, he will honor. Uh, they will honor their twenty twenty-one bid prices for this work. So, taking advantage of those prices as opposed to bidding this out as its own separate project next year, uh, we were bringing this for, this change order forward, uh, in our opinion, to save a significant amount of money based off of that information. Uh, along with that, there's already temporary bypass pumping in place, which is very expensive and there would be a new mobilization. Preliminary estimates of bidding that out as a separate project next year, uh, are in the neighborhood of one point five million. Taking the first part of the change order out of what I described earlier, uh, this is approximately about one point two four million, so there's a savings of a little over a quarter of a million dollars in our opinion. Um, it'll all be based off of whatever it bids if we don't do this work, but, um, so just to make, uh, sure that everybody knows that this work was anticipated and we're bringing it forward now, because we believe it will save us some money to do it now with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Questions, Commissioners? Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Dan, as I'm looking at this, you're asking us for approval for change order number one. Would it be not prudent to just approve them both, because we have to anyway, so?
Yes, in, in the, uh, cover letter for the packet, it actually states the action items is to approve change order one and then I was also going to bring up after discussion of what I just described, that in approving change order number one, we have to approve-
So I'd prefer if we can, Mayor, just to do them both at the same time. And then it just makes sense to me, so.
That's acceptable if it's a- Odd, so that's acceptable to the Commissioners.
And what I'll say is I, I would, we would have loved to have had change order number two either with us or included in change order number one, but they're still working on some structural design components of the connection to the lift station, so, uh, we do anticipate that's going to be in the neighborhood of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which if you add that to change order one, actually is, um, very similar in cost to what is on the current CIP for the next year's project.
So if there are no other questions, I'd make a motion to approve both change order number one and change order number two.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Simmons and a second by Commissioner George. So that is item number eleven, Dan, that you're, that we're referencing?
That is correct. In item number eleven-
So I want to, I want to state this clearly, so everybody understands it.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, item number ten, project number thirteen sixteen point two.
That's number one. What's the second one? Is that number eleven?
Uh, change order number two is not listed on this agenda. It is listed in the agenda packet.
Thank you for that clarification. So we are approving project number thirteen sixteen point two. Uh, a, a double amendment for, uh, a change order number one and change number, number two on thirteen sixteen point two.
That is correct.
The Northside Regional Sanitary Sewer Collect- that is what the motion is, okay? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We did not have that on the agenda, that, that the, uh, second amendment was number two on thirteen sixteen, so. Forgive my confusion on that.
I, um, should have, I should have got that as well. I apologize.
Item number eleven is project number thirteen forty, a sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, replacement and incidentals. Mr. Hanson, city engineer. It is in pages two fifty-one to two sixty-one in the packet and hi- his request is to accept the bid and award a contract. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. Uh, again, in the packet is, uh, this, uh, project number thirteen- Again, in the packet is this project number thirteen forty. You may recall this. This is the project that has come up over the last couple of commission meetings where we've actually approved the pre-purchase of some items that are hard to to get, that we wanted to make sure that the city had it available for the contractor. This project rehabilitates some sanitary sewer lift stations, and what was bid out was all of the work other than the acquisition of the items that we have already placed on order for us. So it's to install those and rehab those lift stations. CC Steel was the only bidder, and we've had good luck with them. They did the last project with us, and I would recommend that we award the bid to them.
With that being said, when you, when you referenced the, the valves and the various materials that we placed on order, do you have a delivery date on those yet, or is are they?
I, I don't have that with me. I can get that information.
But you have acknowledgement of, of the, those materials that have been ordered and they are in the order process, or?
Yes, after the commission approved it two commission meetings ago, that was moved on and have, they are on order.
So the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars excludes those control parts that we've got on order, is that right?
That's correct. In the, in the engineers' report, the estimate, the estimate was one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you add this current bid plus the equipment that was purchased by the city, that is very close to one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we are approximately about one hundred thousand dollars underneath the engineers' estimate for this project and including the items that the, the city purchased.
That's refreshing.
Don't get to say that too often nowadays.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson's second. It's been moved and seconded to approve project number thirteen forty, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, replacement and incidentals as presented by Mr. Hanson, and we are accepting the bid and awarding the contract. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by aye. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. You're a busy guy. Item number twelve, concrete pavement repair project, Ninth Street East. Mr. Hanson, city engineer, is presenting pages two sixty-two to two seventy in the packet. And the purpose of this discussion is to create a project number twenty-two sixty-six and approve the engineers' report and direct engineer to prepare plans and specifications. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you again, Commissioner, President and Commissioners. Again, in the packet is project number twenty-two sixty-six, and this project is intended to be designed in-house. Skip down to, it's easier, just on Ninth Street East. We do have some, some COVID funds that we were able to use that need to be expended by the end of the year twenty twenty-four. You can see up on the exhibit here, there are some red areas where we've identified, along with engineering and public works, where there are some panels that could, are in need of being replaced. Some of them are adjacent to some utilities, and so this is basically, if you take a look at some concrete roadways as they're getting repaired, you're pulling out panels and replacing them with new panels. There has been some work, a couple of questions I've had since the packet came out, is that there has been some work in this area. If you recall, a northbound turn lane was added and also the XL Energy came through and did some work on that. We're not repairing any of those new areas. We're repairing some of the areas that were constructed in the early to mid nineties. So this is aged roadway, and we're able to use those, those funds to do this project. This is separate from the, the overall concrete repair projects that we've been doing in the past. We still intend to do those. This is a specific set aside project that we were looking to do that work with. It's a little more significant than just the, the spot repairs that we've been doing. And again, on the, in the packet, it also shows the, I'm sorry, the engineers' report shows that the, the amount of funds that we have for this project are six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is the estimate for the project, which of that, we have three hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars of the ARP COVID infrastructure funds that we can apply towards this project.
And this project was in the CIP, correct?
I believe.
For twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Anderson's second. It's been moved and seconded to approve projects number thirteen, oh, no. Concrete pair, pavement repair project, Ninth Street East, create project number twenty-two sixty-six to approve the engineers' report and direct engineer to prepare plans and specification. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number thirteen is a pavement rehabilitation project, Seventh Street Northeast, Ninth Street to the city limits and Ninth Street Northwest, Main Avenue to Drain twenty-one. Mr. Dan Hanson, city engineer, it is in, and it is in the packet, it's in pages two seventy-two to two eighty-one. And that, their request here is to create project number twenty-two sixty-seven to approve the engineers' report and direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you again, Commissioner, President and Commissioners. Again, in the packet, you'll find the engineers' report, some pictures of what we're looking at doing here. Basically, these are two projects that were identified in the CIP as having need, and it's been brought to our attention by Public Works recently that they are in critical need of maintenance prior to this winter to continue to provide an avocable roadway for, for our citizens. And I'll take the, the project and basically split it up as two different pieces. There's the Seventh Avenue Northeast project, that's from Ninth Street East, east to the city limits. That, excuse me, project was on the twenty twenty-two CIP as a twenty twenty-three construction project. I'm sorry, that, I'm sorry, that was actually as a five hundred thousand dollar project on the twenty twenty-two CIP. I apologize. The intent for this is that we would design this in-house and the work would actually be completed by Public Works. They would be renting pavers, ordering the materials, and the only thing that they would be really contracting out would be the milling portion of it because we don't own a milling machine big enough to do that work. So, we're estimating that the, instead of the, the five hundred thousand dollars that's in the current CIP, that we would be able to do that for two hundred thousand dollars by doing all the work in-house. So basically, it's a material cost and we would take care of the engineering and Public Works would complete the construction part of it. I do have some pictures of the, the roadway in the packet if, if you're interested in looking at it, but that's one, half of the, the project. And the other half of the project is Ninth Street Northwest from Main Avenue up north to Eighth Avenue, which was listed on the twenty twenty-three CIP as a full reconstruct project for seven million dollars. We're not going that far to the north right now. What we're only proposing to do is the worst part of that area would be from Main to where the, the roadway crosses Drain twenty-one, and we would also do a mill and overlay of that. We believe that that's going to give us a couple more years, a few more years out of the lifecycle of this roadway, so we can, we would not have to do the seven million dollar project next year if we were to do this project this year. The estimate for just doing that piece of the, the roadway would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars to do that work in-house. And it's just a very good use of our resources between engineering and public work, staff working together to do that, that we would be able to get, even if it's a couple more years use out of that roadway before that large project comes, it's a good use of the taxpayer money. So, combining those two projects, excuse me, then we would be looking for approval from the commission to do those two mill and overlay projects.
Commissioner Olson?
Dan, you, you quoted some prices about us doing it in-house, but then we also would have to rent a machine to mill off that layer of asphalt. Does that include?
Yes, the, the milling is included in the prices.
And to make, I drove both of these when you, after you brought these up in the preview committee. So Seventh Avenue Northeast, just so the public understands, we stop at the underpass, correct?
Seventh Avenue.
Ninth Avenue, excuse me.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's Seventh Avenue Northeast from Ninth Street East to the city limits, and then there's Ninth Street Northwest from Main up to Eighth Avenue. We would stop prior to, right where, right where, if you're, if you're talking about Ninth Street Northwest.
Oh, to the drain, okay.
Yeah, we would go north until it crosses the drain. As soon as you cross the drain, we would not be going any further north than, than that. So we would not be going actually under the, underpass.
I see. Doesn't go quite to the underpass then. Very good.
Is there a railroad line there?
Yep.
You go past that?
Nope.
Yeah.
You mean that spur?
Yeah, spur. A spur coming from Bush Ag. There is a railroad crossing right there, and that, you better be careful how fast you're driving there.
I guess, Commissioner, President and Commissioners, uh, yeah, we would go that dip there, that if you go over it real fast, that pretty much all your luggage in the back would go over right now. We're going to take that out, level that out, so that's just past that spur line and the drain there.
Do we need to work with railroad company to, to do that work there, the right of way?
Yeah. I believe we already talked to them and we were, where we're at, we're good.
Okay. That would just delay the project if we had to wait for them.
Any other questions for Mr. Hanson, please?
I just have a quick comment. I talked to Dan about this a little bit earlier, but I just, I believe this obviously desperately needs to be done, and just so I put this out there publicly, I think all three of those roads that go from Main to Twelfth Avenue are all in pretty rough shape and they all need to be addressed. I also think it's super important that in the somewhat near future, we look at doing a sidewalk or a multi-use path down at least one of those because not one of them has a sidewalk or multi-use path that goes down it, that connects Twelfth Avenue to Main, and I think we should have that, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Again, we're looking for a motion to create project number twenty-two sixty-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. Been moved and seconded for, to approve the pavement rehabilitation project to create project number twenty-two sixty-seven, which is Ninth Street to the city limits and Ninth, uh, and Ninth Street Northwest to Drain twenty-one, as presented by Mr. Hanson. Is there any further discussion?
And the motion would also include to approve the engineers' report and direct the engineer to prepare the plans and specifications.
Yep.
Asking to approve the engineers' report and direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is the second reading of ordinance twelve twelve, the Liquor Control Board. Mr. John Shockley, city attorney, city of West Fargo, is on page two eighty-two of the packet. Mr. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. This is a simple ordinance change, taking the chief of police and code enforcement off of the liquor control board and instead placing the assistant city administrator and city planner on. The request came from the police department because the police department didn't feel comfortable performing the compliance checks and also being on the liquor control board. There's been no changes between the first and second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Questions?
I'll make motions to approve second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. George's second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance twelve twelve of the liquor control board as presented by Mr. Shockley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number fifteen, West Fargo Refunding Improvement Bond twenty twenty-two A. Mr. Shockley, city attorney, city of West Fargo. It is in pages two eighty-three to three oh two in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Tonight, before you, you have the resolution approving the sale of the refunding improvement bond. Mike Manstrom from Colliers will go through the sale results. This is a smaller issue. Historically, we've, you know, been thirty, forty million dollars. This year, we're only at six million dollars, which is probably a, a good thing. We're, we're on the other side of doing improvements for the city. And so Mike can go through the, the sale results, but it's a standard refunding improvement bond. Market conditions have changed a little bit in the last six months, and Mike can kind of go over the sale results. I can answer any legal questions about the resolution, and Mike can answer any of the sale result questions.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you, President, Artis and Commissioners, Mike Manstrom, Colliers. Glad to be back in front of you. As John mentioned, it's been a challenge to predict interest rates and help the staff determine where we're going with this project. Volatile would be the word for today's market, however, things have calmed down somewhat. We all anticipate another Fed increase next week. Certainly, interest rates, it, it takes no genius to understand that the interest rates will continue to trend up going forward. Try to get a handle on how fast is the question. We did help, we did come up with, our last projection to the city was on June sixteenth, and we were estimating an interest rate of about four point one one. Today, on, on July eighteenth, we're in with three point nine three, or as Jim Larson would say, three point nine three four one one four. So, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the city staff. John and Tina and Jim also participated in the Moody's Rating Review Work, and that, of course, reaffirmed the double eight three rating for the city, which helped us work with investors to place these bonds. What we would, I think we can tell you, we're below market right now today. If we approve John's resolution, we will lock up the three point nine three on a twenty-five year financing over the four districts, four improvement districts, which is really water, sewer, storm and street improvements to all four of those districts. And we'll transfer money on August second, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. As I said, volatile market, but we'll work with it, and I think we had a very good response for the city of West Fargo.
Thank you. Questions? All right, thank you. This is an actionable item. I'm looking for a motion of refunding the Improvement Bond twenty twenty-two A.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson's second. Been moved and seconded to approve the West Fargo Refunding Improvement Bond twenty twenty-two A. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Safe travels going home.
Thank you for the opportunity to work for the city.
Item number sixteen is the city administrators' report. This is Tina Fisk, city administrator.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. I have just a couple of things. I had three things listed, but item B will be taken off of the agenda for right now. The first item I have is the twenty twenty-three budget adjustment discussion. At our first meeting in August, we're going to have to approve the preliminary budget. And as a reminder, the preliminary budget freezes, freezes expenditures from going up. They can only go down after the preliminary budget's approved. So at this time, what we had, what I have in front of me are some questions that were asked by different commissioners about, is there anything that we can do to adjust the budget before we go into preliminary budget hearing? And I just want to go through them and then see what your thoughts are on them, because I know you've had discussions, some of you with staff after you've made your requests. First of all, Commissioner Anderson, question, had a question on the professional services and planning and building inspections. The amount was two hundred thousand dollars. The two hundred thousand dollars was to come from economic development sales tax, so it has no effect on the levy or, or the general fund. But what that is for is for long-range planning, going north and west, to try and get the city in a good location, good spot to be prepared once the diversion goes in. I'm not sure what your thoughts are, Mr. Anderson. I know you've had discussions or anybody else on what you'd like to do. I know you'd requested the ability to cut that in half, so I'm not sure where, where you're at.
Yeah, when I had a conversation with Mr. Nelson about this, he outlined a couple items for next year. I think they're each about fifty thousand or so. items for next year. I think they're each about fifty thousand or so that were lined out. So, um, one was for some changes and another fifty thousand was for this, the Northwest planning, with the following year having the bulk of this, two hundred thousand dollars in that. So, uh, in my conversations with him, um, we've, he felt comfortable with the change, and so I made the request.
Okay. The next other item I have, um, Finance Director, Mr. Larson, and I looked through, um, at the request of President Dardis and others to look if we had the ability to increase any revenues that would affect the general fund. And, um, we were able to find the ability to review our fee structures within the general funds, that's planning and zoning and all those types of things, which should bring in approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. And our investment income, um, Mr. Larson was being conservative, like we usually try to be. Um, but in looking at everything, he felt putting another hundred and fifty thousand in there was still being very, very conservative. So we have an additional three hundred thousand dollars that can be added to the revenues in the general fund, um, to bring, to bring the transfer of funds, because remember, the transfer of funds is a million dollars, so then that three hundred thousand would reduce that to seven hundred thousand. And then if you approve the reduction in, um, the planning and zoning, that won't have any effect on this, because that's coming out of economic development sales tax. So that one, that one's just kind of a wash. Um, the other item that, um, was brought up was by Commissioner George. She had had a discussion with Melissa Richards, our Communications Director, because she had a, um, a position in the budget, and the question was, can this be an intern position versus a staff position? And I believe through your discussions, she was explaining how complicated it is and that it's not, it, it's, it can't be an intern position, because the turnover makes it too complicated to keep up with the standards and the way that the city likes to have things written and taken care of. So I'm not sure how you feel about, um, our recommendation, um, would be to leave that position in full-time, because communications is always being strapped to the, to the maximum. But, um, I need to know the, the wishes of the Commission on that one.
After discussing it with Melissa, I would be comfortable keeping the full-time position in the budget as she had requested.
I, I have a question there.
Please, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, I want to go back up to fee permitting and licensing. It says
Yes, yes.
Fifty thousand dollars. What, what increases are we talking about?
We're talking basic, this is one that I've looked into.
Okay.
Uh, and it's basically, uh, planning and zoning and inspections. If you take a look at some of the ski, fee schedules for surrounding communities and comparable communities, uh, we've not adjusted those fees in a very long time.
So are, are the fees we're talking about, ma'am, are they comparable to the Fargo fees? I mean, I don't want to get out of line.
That's not the base, that, uh, uh, we're not gonna, with all due respect, Mark, this isn't directed at you, we're not gonna do business like Fargo does. Okay? So what we're going to do is we, we, we are using them as benchmarks, if you will. Uh, I doubt whether we will be as high as Fargo is. But we're still doing an assessment of, of those fees.
And, and.
It's a, it's a, it's a great question on your part, uh, but we, our, our, our decision-making process will be based on the staff time that we have and where we feel that it, uh, we can make some adjustments.
And I want to make it clear, it's not about what Fargo does, it's the businesses, the developers, the builders, the construction.
Correct.
Are we competitive? That's, it's not about what Fargo does, it's about getting that business. I, I'm usually for business and economic development, and I don't want to do anything to.
We will be competitive.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Simmons, that's a really good point. Um, we have a number of fees that we haven't increased in ten, fifteen years. And so what we're gonna do is, or longer.
Some of them are longer.
Some longer. So we will be taking a look. Staff has been tasked with, go and look at your fees, list them out, see what a realistic amount should be, and do the research with other communities, so we know where we stand. So that's where we came up with that. So thank you. Um, the other item we have is Communications cut fifteen thousand dollars from their budget for equipment. Um, they were able to find other funding, thanks to another entity, so they're very excited about that. Um, and then the Fire Department has, um, a mechanical truck, soft armor, two air packs and retrofit lights, and something else that I can't understand, quantrofit. Total's a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, they said they can, they don't have to have them in next year's budget, but they will need to purchase them in the following budget. So that would be a reduction of a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine. So overall, we're looking at, um, instead of having to transfer a million dollars from the general fund to cover the deficit, um, it would only be around five hundred thousand dollars if you were to approve these changes, um, because with the permit fees, investment income, the fire, the fire adjustment and the small adjustment from, um, Communications, uh, there, that's where we land at. And again, um, the reduction from planning and zoning is, is very valid, but it just doesn't affect the bottom line is all. So I just need some direction. If you're comfortable with those, we'll put that, we'll put whatever you're comfortable with together, and then we'll be bringing back the preliminary budget, the first meeting in January.
Commissioners.
Is this an actual item, or do we just need a consensus, or what, what?
Just a consensus is all that's necessary, but I would encourage, uh, you know, everyone to continue to scrutinize the budget, including my fellow Commissioners, but we do have to have the preliminary budget in, in early August, as indicated by Mrs. Fisk. So this is an ongoing discussion. Offer any insight and input that you have. And, uh, you know, I know that the, um, administrative, Mrs. Fisk, Mr. Scott, Mr. Larson have, uh, expressed this to the department heads, and, and they've, uh, continued to review their budgets and their, their proposals that they've sent forward. So it's an ongoing discussion. But do we have a consensus of the discussion that's taken place here, uh, for Mrs. Fisk?
Okay, we will move forward. Thank you, Commissioners. We will move forward and prepare the preliminary budget. And once that's prepared, um, we will get copies out to you, so that you can review it, and we'll have it on the agenda for August one.
Okay.
Um, the other item I have is, um, we had looked at a couple of different agencies to
provide services for IT proposals. Well, we have gone through and interviewed for IT Director position, and we have a candidate that will be coming forward to visit with staff and, and the IT Department. So at this time, I'd like to put on hold hiring, um, any additional services until that person gets in and, based on their skills, um, can help make the right decisions, um, for the department. So I just wanted to put that out there, make sure you're okay. I've spoken with, we've spoken with both entities that, that we met with, so.
Independent third-party contractors.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes. Um, and I have a couple of the things. First of all, this will be Jim Larson's last meeting. He is going on to another adventure sadly. Um, but I wanted to extend thanks to him. I mean, the bonding, the audit, the finances, it's been phenomenal. And he's worked extremely hard, and it is greatly appreciated. He's leaving us in so much of a better spot than the terrible mess we gave him when he came. So I just wanted to make sure to thank him. Um, so, other than that, the only other thing I have left is I'd like to introduce all of you to Casey Sanders. She's our new Economic Development Manager. She just got started, and she's been out running around, meeting people and businesses and board members. So I will introduce you, and she can come and say hi.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Administrator Fisk said, I'm Casey Sanders Berkland, and I'm excited to get started here. It's my third week with the city staff, and they've been more than welcome, and I'm looking forward to, um, hearing a little bit more about each one of you and how we can, um, move the city forward.
Thank you, Casey. Anything else, Mrs. Fisk?
No, I do not, and I had handed out your correspondence, or had Emily hand out your correspondence prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any non-agenda items that haven't been listed that you'd like to speak on this evening? City, City Department Heads, anything? Yes, sir.
So we could use this time to, on Thursday at eleven-thirty, we're having a strategic planning meeting, uh, for, that's open to the public, for the Public Works. Um, it's their public input meeting, uh, over at Lieutenant Gufferson Room from eleven-thirty to one PM.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for this? Department Heads? You appear to want to speak to the, are you on the agenda?
No, I'm not, sir.
Commissioners?
Move to, or do you want, what do you want?
I'm gonna take the lead from the Commissioners.
Move to adjourn.
If, the, the, the rules that we are governed by is that you have to be on the agenda in order to speak. So if you have something that you want to bring forward, we have time to do the research and then do, and have an understanding of what you're, might be presenting to us.
This is something that's happening in the community that actually just, just happened, so it wouldn't have been able to be on the agenda at what was happening. But it's something that the city, I believe, um, having eleven sexual assaults, can only one of them be dealt with in seven days. I think it is something that the city should be looking at when this is happening and women aren't able to come forward and report it.
My opinion is she sat here through the entire meeting, she should be allowed to speak for at least a few minutes, and then if she'd like to get deeper into discussion, maybe we put her on the agenda for the next time. But I think she should at least deserve a few minutes of our time. That's my opinion.
I'll respect that, Commissioner. Step to the, you have four minutes.
Thank you. I think I'll probably only take sixty seconds. Um, as a chaplain, I'm MJ Krog, or Maria Krog, and, um, was first sexually assaulted in this town nineteen seventy-five and reported it to Greg Warren, and it's continuing to happen, and nobody seems to be doing anything about it. I know we're doing something about the garbage, the water, the sewer, the buildings, the buildings, and the cops and stuff like that, and everything's expanding. But this week, when eleven people were sexually assaulted.
In the City of West Fargo?
In the City of West Fargo, and only two of them have dared to go to Sanford. And what happens is you have to make a police report, and you have to have a sexual assault nurse, and you're not allowed to get any help. Um, so that, I mean, years later, I end up being raped with a crucifix and left for dead, basically, and I wasn't allowed to get medical help until I talked to law enforcement, which then was blown off. And now it's happening. I haven't had an underground rescue up until about a month ago, and I had a four-year-old little girl, six-year-old boy, eight-year-old boy, ten-year-old boy, thirteen-year-old girl, fourteen-year-old girl, sixteen-year-old girl, two adults. And none of them are able to go to rape and abuse, um, South, yeah, this services and stuff like that. When you do, and you go to law enforcement and things like that, majority of the time, you're assaulted worse by the process and the stuff that's going on. I would ask the City Commission in the city to let these people come forward in a way that they are not having to stand up here and ask for help like I am. But I'm not asking for help for myself. I have, I apologize, I sound like this. I have aphasia and dysphagia. Medically, that means you won't have to deal with me much longer. But this, this was a library right, right next to us when I was a kid. And in nineteen seventy-five, I ended up moving, because I was being assaulted on a red and white merry-go-round. And I got a sticker, a blanket, and a bottle of water. And that's still happening. And we're ignoring it. And I think these kids in this community deserve better. And I know that this, the chief, that's probably gonna do something about it, just like the last chief. But these people are scared to come forward. And we got a beautiful Cheyenne Street down there, and we had three women assaulted. Two of them on Father's Day weekend. One lady packed up her shit, her car, her apartment, took a bag, and left town, because she wasn't calling the law enforcement. And as a chaplain, I pray for all of you and the city and these kids, and I think something should be done about it. I don't know what. I don't know who wants to do what. But I shouldn't have to be sitting here embarrassed, humiliated, after being married to a sheriff for thirteen years, and him knowing there's not a damn thing that can be done about it sometimes. We're supposed to suck it up, turn around. There is money. A happy hooker in this town can make eleven to fifteen thousand dollars a week. What's the fine for the people that are making these women and kids a commodity? There's money. But I think you should also be paying attention to the people that live here, and the people that would like to stay living here. And it's not being addressed. It's being shoved under the rug. And if it's brought up to somebody like Greg Warren or Joan Behar Carter, something like that, we're told, we can go take a long stay in Jamestown. So you got Brenda Curtis, that was raped and abused and assaulted. She got sent through the process. She ended up dead. And everybody said she's just a hooker, a drug addict, mentally ill person. Well, yeah, I admit I have PTSD. But you're a lawyer, you're a lady from the city. You were, you told me I wasn't allowed to be on the City Commission. I came here in two thousand eighteen after being raped by the Somalians, and a crucifix shoved in me and told me, that's my God. Well, this is my city, and this is my town, and all of you intend to work for me. So you should do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Please, Commissioner Simmons.
You said there were eleven assaults in the City of West Fargo, but none of them have been reported. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, some of them have been reported, and in Fargo, and in Morehead. And I was out of town, and I got to talk to four of those women who are absolutely not reporting it. You know why? They said not a damn thing is done about it. They get humiliated and embarrassed by the system.
Okay, so slow down, slow down, please, please, slow down. So is it, is it our judicial system? Is it, I mean?
It's a judicial system. It's the law enforcement officers. There's no mobile unit. I just dealt with a thirteen-year-old that I reported the other day, out of town. Had Morehead police go get her. Go talk to her. Within two days, she was reported as a runaway and it got blown off. That was by Fargo PD. She was held hostage and raped, found at community homes. Her life has changed. And she's just blown off. You know what? She had to, she had to make a appearance at Sanford Hospital, only to be told they didn't have a sexual assault nurse available. And because she's younger than sixteen, she needs to make an appointment for the next day. So she was sent to my house. I got to collect her, her shirt, her pants, her underwear, and her shorts, and put it in a little lunch bag. That's gonna be a great chain of command.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners?
I think something needs to be put on the agenda at some point, but when I applied, I was told no. I wasn't able to be heard. So thank you for hearing me out.
Absolutely, and I apologize for any of that, but I, I do think as a Commission, Commissioner George, I think it's something that we should at least look into and have the discussions. I know you hear that all the time, but there isn't much more as a Commission we can do other than to, to try to help.
Yeah, we're building the park and the merry-go-round and all that fun stuff. It's not fun when you're a kid and you live in this town, and eleven of your friends hang around you, and nine of them are assaulted by grown-ass men in this town. And there is money. These women are allowed to sell themselves on, actually take a donation online. So I can put myself online, too, and get a donation and bring money in to make a difference. But right now, with health issues, I'd rather not, but I sure can if I need to. Because these kids in this town deserve better.
Well, let us have these discussions, ma'am, okay? Let us have these. Give us a little time to have them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anything else, Commissioners? Commissioner Simmons?
I'll move to adjourn.
Commissioner Olson?
Second.
We stand adjourned.